Meeting of the Lakeside Park City Council to order. Would everyone please stand and remain standing? Mr. Wolfher, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the liberty of our republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather here this evening, let us be reminded that we are here to make decisions for our city as a whole. Give us the courage and the wisdom to make the best decisions possible. We pray for those who protect us, protect them, keep them safe, all military, firefighters, police officers, and all first responders. We pray for those who are sick and suffering or suffering the loss of others. We pray that you will give them comfort, healing, and peace in hard times. We pray for -- we pray all these things humbly and with grace and gratitude. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Thayman. Thank you, Mr. Wolfher. As you know, my name is Paul Markref. I'm the mayor of Lakeside Park. To my left is our city clerk treasurer, Teresa Brock. To my right is our city attorney, Mr. Greg Boss. Mrs. Brock, would you please read roll?
Tom Bernheimer.
Here.
Dennis Landwear.
Here.
Cassie Schabel.
Here.
Mary Ann Thayman.
Here.
Brian Waite.
Here.
Dave Wolfher.
Here.
All president accounted for. Now, again, this is a special meeting because of some personal issues. We did not have a quorum last week. As a special meeting, we are limited only to what is published on the agenda. So the first issue is to adopt the agenda that was sent out last week. I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Thayman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bernheimer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? The agenda is adopted unanimously. The next is the approval, consideration of the minutes of our special meeting of July 7, 2025. Has everyone received a copy of those? I will entertain a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of July 7, 2025.
Make that motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Landwear. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Waite. Is there any discussion or changes or amendments to those minutes? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the July 7 meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, that is unanimous. Next up, for the good of the order, is the mayor's report. I'm going to be very brief. I had limited time up here recently. The first thing I'd like to let everybody know that at the end of last month, our city clerk treasurer, Teresa, was -- or became a certified municipal city clerk. This is the culmination of three years of hard work and training on her part. We have sent her off for that training, and besides the actual training, the relationships that she has developed through that has immensely benefited our city. And I would like to congratulate her on this tremendous award. And I am also encouraging her, and she has agreed, she would like to continue to become a certified master clerk. On another note, I would like to express the city's sympathy to Mr. Landwear. He suddenly lost his wife Betty within the last couple of weeks. And we are very sorry, Dennis, and we'll be happy to assist you in any way we can.
Thank you, sir.
Now, school has started, and I want everyone to please watch when you're driving for children going to and from school, whether they're walking, whether they're riding bikes or scooters, because kids can be unpredictable. We don't want any of our children to be hurt. We don't want there to be any accidents involving anybody, but mostly particularly those driving children to school. Unfortunately, lately, we have all seen people who are in such a rush to hurry up and beat a red light that they go through red lights and either cause accidents or near accidents. Please, slow down and care about your fellow citizens and your fellow drivers. That leads me to another. We've had several complaints lately about motorized scooters. Sometimes we've had children who don't watch, and they're buzzing around 30 miles an hour on our sidewalks or in the streets. Again, this is a potential danger. I'm calling on parents to please educate your children, just to be aware of their surroundings. And drivers, please watch out. Children are unpredictable. It's the nature of the age. So, thank you. I would also -- we will be in touch with all of our council members. I think that it would probably behoove us to have another caucus meeting in the near future so that we can discuss issues that are coming up that are of interest to our residents and our council members. So we will see what we can do about scheduling a date. Other than that, the only thing I would like to say is a special thank you to our city staff and to the council members since that I've been out a little bit. And the sympathy expressed to my family and the assistance while my wife recuperates, I certainly appreciate it. So, but thank you, everyone, for your concerns. That'll conclude the mayor's report.
You ready for me?
Next up is our city attorney. We have a couple of issues here. Mr. Boss?
Resolution number 7, 2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Lakeside Park, Kentucky to execute a statewide emergency management, mutual aid, and assistance agreement, where he adds the local entities located in the county of Kentucky recognize the importance of having each local entity respond in a coordinated and efficient manner to restore the public safety, health, and welfare of the community stricken by an emergency or disaster, whereas pursuant to KRS 65.210, a local entity entered into a mutual aid and assistance agreement may include provisions for furnishing and exchanging of supplies, equipment, facilities, personnel, and services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Lakeside Park, Kentucky, as follows, that the mayor of Lakeside Park, Kentucky is authorized to enter into a statewide emergency management, mutual aid, and assistance agreement attached here too.
Thank you, Mr. Boss. This is a piece of housekeeping, but what it allows the cities to do is to render aid to fellow cities. If we were struck by a series of tornadoes, I know that other cities, along with FEMA and Kenton County Emergency Management, would be happy to help us. But this makes it reciprocal, and all the cities of Kentucky have been asked to adopt this. So with that brief explanation, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 07-2025.
I'll make that motion, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfher. Is there a second?
Yes, second, sir.
I think I heard Mr. Landwear first.
That's all right. Not a contest.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I believe this can probably be done by a voice vote. All in favor of adopting Resolution 07-2025? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, six to nothing.
Ordinance number 8, 2025, an ordinance of the city of Lakeside Park in Kenton County, Kentucky, providing for the assessment of all real estate and personal property within the corporate limits of the city of Lakeside Park that are subject to taxation for city purposes by the use of the annual county assessment thereof by the property valuation administrator of Kenton County, and levying an ad valorem tax thereon for the city purposes during the fiscal year, which begins July 1, 2025, at the rate of .24 dollars for each $100 so assessed of real property, and the rate of 1.481 dollars for each 100 so assessed of personal property, and the rate of 27.69 cents per 100 so assessed for motor vehicles and watercraft property, providing for the payment and collection of such taxes, and the penalties and interest thereon, and describing the purposes for which such taxes so collected shall be appropriated and used, now therefore be ordained by the city of Lakeside Park, Kentucky, as follows. Section 1, the city of Lakeside Park hereby provides for assessment of all real, personal, and motor vehicle and watercraft within the corporate limits of the city of Lakeside Park for the fiscal year, which begins July 1, 2025, and use the annual assessment of the PBA of Kenton County. Section 2, that there is hereby levied on real and personal property within the corporate limits of the city of Lakeside Park that is subject to taxation and ad valorem tax for the real property of .240 dollars for each 100 of value, and ad valorem tax for personal property of $1.40.481 for each $100 of value, and a rate of 27.69 cents per $100 of value for motor vehicle and watercraft property. Section 3, the taxes levied pursuant to the terms hereof shall be due and payable on the 31st day of December, 2025, at the office of the city clerk, and shall be delinquent after that date. And thereafter, there shall be added a penalty of 10% plus interest thereon at the rate of 12% per annum from the first day of January, 2026, until paid, plus the cost of collection, including court costs and attorney fees. The tax bills generated by the city of Lakeside Park, Kentucky shall include taxes levied pursuant to ordinance and the current waste, garbage, and tax -- or trash collection charges levied as a supplemental tax pursuant to KRS 82.095. City taxes may be paid at the Lakeside Park City Building or mailed to the city of Lakeside Park at 9 Buttermilk Pike, Lakeside Park, Kentucky. If paying by mail and you wish to have a receipt, enclose a self-addressed stamped envelope for use to mail a receipt back to you. Further, the mail must be postmarked on or before December 31, 2025, to avoid delinquent penalties and interest. Section 4, in order to secure the payment of the ad valorem taxes hereby levied and assessed, and all penalties, interest, fees, commissions, charges, and other expenses, including court costs and attorney fees incurred by reason of any delinquency in payment, the city of Lakeside Park has a lien, therefore, upon the property upon which such taxes levied and collected pursuant to the terms hereof shall be deposited in the general fund of the city and appropriated and used for the general operating expenses of the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025. Invalidity of any provision as ordinance shall not affect validity of any other provision. All ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict with provisions as ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. That is your first reading.
Thank you. We just got the tax, the paperwork from the Northern Kentucky Area Development District today, and I did meet with the Finance Committee. We had designed the budget so that there would be no raises in taxes this year. What has just been read is, again, no increase in taxes. So it would be the same. And as you recall, last year, we did decrease our tax rate and the actual taxes. So this will be more fully discussed by members of council if they wish at the next Thank you, Mr. Boss. Is there anything else at this point?
I have nothing, but if anyone has any question.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Boss?
Do you know, is there any state law or any requirements for RFPs, for services that we use as a city, like the city attorney or engineers?
Are you asking Mr. Boss or me?
Either, Mr. Boss.
As to required RFP now.
You know, when's the last time that we did that for our engineering or our legal services?
I've been here since 2009, so.
Okay.
Okay. Don't understand what that had to do with the city attorney's report, but we will move on.
Well, it has to do with expenses, and I just, you know, if we haven't raised the taxes, but maybe.
We are not discussing the tax rate and budgets. We are limited to what is on the agenda tonight.
I'm responding to your comment, mayor.
Moving on, city clerk treasurer's report.
I just have a couple of things. We have now upgraded our QuickBooks to an online program. Moving right along, it's been a pretty good transition. Just trying to navigate through some of the new features on it, though. Then we have scheduled our annual audit for the year 2425 for the second week of September. Our auditor will be here the whole week. The last thing I have is on the sidewalk invoices, we've received 36% so far, but I just wanted to remind everybody that the due date for the payments are August the 31st. And if you have any questions, to please contact Steve Greer. He's in charge of this project, and he can be reached at the office at 859-341-6670 extension 103 if you have any questions. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions from Mrs. Brock? Thank you. Committee reports. Fire and EMS. Chief? Mayor? Mr. Chancy? Welcome.
I answer to anything. Did be back, and for July, it was relatively calm in Lakeside Park. There were total 17 runs, 13 of which were our ordinary red and butter ambulance calls. Four, the remaining four were accidental fire one drops. And really, that's about it.
Well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I would also like to thank the Fort Mitchell squad for their prompt response to take my wife to the hospital after her fall. They were very professional and did a great job of comforting her and transporting. So, thank you.
Pass that on.
They only dropped her once.
This is disgusting, Thayman.
Thank you. Public works.
That would be me, sir.
Mr. Bernheimer?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start out with a monthly project status report. Sidewalk assessments project has been completed with the exception of a little bit of a yard restoration that'll come in spring. The invoices have gone out, and as our city clerk mentioned, a little over a third of them have been paid and returned. The next project is Dixie Highway Sidewalk, Crestview Hills project. It's in progress but waiting for federal locate and funding. Next, we have Belmonte Avenue resurfacing and curb replacement. Project has been -- applications will be accepted in between June 1 and October, so they will be finalized next month, hopefully, and we're waiting to hear the good news that we might get up to $500,000 to help us with that project. And do we have Dixie Highway and Buttermilk Pike crossing improvements? There's been no change in that. Dixie Highway benches, no change in that project. Marlowe Way and Shaker Road reconstruction. Works completed on both streets with the exception of joint sealer, which will be applied shortly, and it came in at $6,000 below budget, which is always good news. Williams Avenue trench drain has been completed with a little bit of touch-up remaining. That will be done in the near future. Our five-year street program, we mentioned previously that there is a company called InfraHub that will do an assessment of our current pavement conditions and roadside inventory, and we approved $784 for that, and it'll be a major help to us as opposed to having somebody drive the streets and make lists of all the necessary improvements that need to be made, or at least the current status. There is a program coming up for joint and crack seal replacement on East Lakeside, Williams, Van Dern, Elizabeth Holliday, Yancey, Geeson, I'm sorry, and Paul Hesser. It's, the bids will be sent out, and those people that are impacted by that project will be notified by letter. Next, I have an update on the city engineers projects. Steve Greer, we're in the process of upgrading the building security system, which means a couple additional cameras and some additional security on some of our windows that have none at the current time. There's some landscaping work to be performed on West Lakeside and Gilmore. There'll be a crew out there to trim the bushes where people can't see, and hopefully that'll improve the visibility of that area when you come down and try and turn left or you want to see if a car's coming to you, towards you. I just want to caution everybody to make sure that you keep a watch when there's a crew working there. That's a tight quarters. Make sure you slow down and give them the right of way. The radar sign is now on West Lakeside. It will be moved at the end of this month over to Marion when the preschool starts back in session. And the last item is the curb on Locust and Gilmore, where the turn goes into the intersection, will be painted yellow to remind people that you're not supposed to park near an intersection. And we've had some close calls there. We want to avoid any future problems. And that is my report, unless I forgot something. Mary Ann, Dennis?
Sounds good. Thank you, Tom.
The only thing that I would add, and it does not directly affect our public works, but there, the Department of Transportation is going to be repaving Dixie Highway from Kenton Lands, so across from the new Kroger that's going to be opening on September 17, I believe, but from there all the way down to Karen Drive. That paving is going to be done at night, but there will be traffic maintained, at least one lane in each direction. So if you're going to be driving in the evening or late at night, be aware that that's going to be done during this week and weather-dependent, perhaps into next week. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bernheimer. Next, police authority. Mr. Waite?
Thank you, mayor. Police Authority Board met on July 21, highlighting some of the continued professional development in the department. Sergeant Goodman attended a primary police operations course at the Northern Kentucky Police and Sheriff's Training Center, and patrolman Joel Tigner attended a course through the Department of Criminal Justice Training. At that meeting in July, the board also awarded an RFP for the purchase of two new vehicles, keeping up with the, keeping the fleet up to date and in good order under regular cadence. There was discussion regarding possible expansion of the current FLOC license plate reader technology, which has been in use around the town center. There was talk about expanding that program throughout the cities. On a personnel note, the board also voted to accept the recommendation of the chief and through the promotion process to promote Joel Tigner to the level of sergeant. And I will mention here that through that process, the level of, again, I say this all the time, the level of expertise that we have in the department under the development of the chief is just outstanding and second to none. So just highlighting the quality of the officers that we have and how impressive the talent is and how blessed we are. That was it for that meeting in July. The Police Authority Board also met this evening at 5:30 tonight prior to this meeting, so I'll go ahead and highlight that meeting as well. Mostly standard business tonight. Sergeant Sam Goodman did officially retire, and his last day with the department was August 1, and we do wish him well and thank him for his service. New patrolman Ethan Boyers completed basic training on August 7, and he has entered Phase 1 of his field training, and is reportedly doing very well so far. Captain Pelucci and Chief Degenhardt attended the Kentucky Chief of Police Conference, and then there was also further discussion about the expansion of that FLOC program. Do you want to also highlight, and I'll ask the chief to come up to the podium to talk about the women's self-defense class that's going to be coming up here next month, which is very highly rated and highly recommended for females in the community. So, chief, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Councilman Waite. Yes, our department is pleased to once again present RAD, Self-Defense Training. RAD stands for Rape Aggression Defense. It's a nationally renowned women's-only self-defense system that's presented in four sections. This presentation will occur starting on September 16, another session on September 18, 23, and 25. Each evening, it is from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Anyone that's interested in attending this training can reach out to Officer Armstrong either through email, or feel free to call our office or check our Facebook page for other ways to sign up. I would also like residents to keep in mind that if they're unable to make the dates of this training, to contact us anyway and express their interest. The nice thing about having in-house instructors for this program is that based on demand, we can host more courses as the demand becomes large enough for another course. There is no age limit on this particular program. The nice thing is, is we can adjust the program as needed based on age or physical capabilities. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us. We'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, chief. Is there any questions for the chief?
That was my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Waite. Next up, continuing, Mr. Waite, Planning and Development Services.
The PDS Council did not meet last month, so there is no report from the PDS Council.
Thank you. Finance.
And that's me again. So I was in earlier this month to review all the bank reconciliations and the bank statements and the credit card statements to keep up with our internal controls guidelines. Everything balanced out perfectly. Kudos to Mrs. Brock on that, and as well, like she mentioned, she is spending time getting to know the new upgraded QuickBooks system, so we appreciate your dedication to take that on.
That concludes the finance report, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Waite.
Unless Dave, do you have anything to add?
Nothing. Municipal Government League.
No report, sir.
Thank you. Recreation.
Mayor, I have reported a few things. Unfortunately, we had a kids' line dance class we tried to do last month that it got canceled because of lack of signups. However, we had 25 tickets for FC Cincy game on August 3. Every one of them were purchased, and it was a good game. They didn't win, but it was still a good game. Anyway, once again, last Tuesday, we canceled our senior bingo because of lack of signup. And the last thing I have on here is there is on August 22 and 24, it's House and Outdoor Living Show at the Sharonville Convention Center. We have free tickets, including parking for those days if you're interested. Once again, August 22 through the 24th, we have the tickets here, or can be obtained here at the office. Right, okay. All right. Other than that, we are moving forward to try to do some preparations for Light Up Lakeside, and if anybody's interested in helping with that, be on a committee, you will be very welcome. And I believe that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thayman. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. Next, we will need to have an executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session under KRS 61-810-1C to discuss pending or proposed litigation against or on behalf of the city.
I'll make that motion, mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Thayman. Is there a second? I'll second it. Thank you, Mr. Bernheimer. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Bernheimer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting, going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Motion is adopted. We will, the council will proceed into the conference room, and we will not be taking any action after we come out, so there will be no need for further television coverage. Thank you. If we can.